Mayor Steinberg, staffers ready when you are.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council would come to order with a clerk call the roll, please, and we will establish a quorum.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Geta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Thank you very much. We'd all rise, please, those who can, and ask Councilmember Jennings to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. We have a consent calendar with seven items, then one discussion item relating to cannabis dispensaries and equity. Let us begin with the consent calendar. Are there members who want to discuss any items separately or to take a matter separately?
Mayor, I'd like to move the consent calendar but make a comment when the time is appropriate.
Second, and I'll do the same.
Moved and seconded. Of course, comments.
Callers on the consent calendar.
How many, Madam Clerk?
Eleven.
Let's hear from the, let's hear from the public, and then we'll turn it over to the members.
Thank you. May I have my first caller on the consent calendar, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. This is Dr. Steve Winlock. I'm the Chair of the Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy Commission, and I wanted to make sure that I thank you, Mayor, and also our city council members for your support of the arts and the culture and creative economy culture in Sacramento. You know, you all are so important, and thank you for keeping it alive. I want to address item number seven. I want to share with you that the last CARE funding of 7.5 million supported our artists, our art organizations, our art and city assets, our creative economy, small businesses during this unprecedented time, which we needed your support to hopefully sustain our arts and creative economy during this time. I want to share with you the 7.5 million provided grants in all of our city districts. The commission worked with the Arts and Cultural Convention and Cultural Service Department to ensure that there was transparency in the grant process and ensure that the lens of the equity and the, and equity and inclusion for all was involved in serving all of Sacramento. I want to assure you that the next 6.9 million that you commit to the arts and culture and creative economy will further our support of the arts and culture and creative economy and, and ensure that arts culture will be able to sustain itself so that we're here when we can resume. You know, the, the next funding will also follow all the things that we did in making sure it's transparent, so we're reaching all of our areas, reaching out to making sure that we're supporting our districts, all districts. And we also will be making sure there's equity and inclusion in this, in being transparent in this process. So again, I just want to thank the, the council so much.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you. That's what I need to say. And know that this next funding will also be serving us, and we will support it really well. And again, I want to thank the council.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Kyla Bryant, Program Coordinator with the Sacramento Metro Chamber's Small Business Development Center, calling in support of item four on tonight's agenda. As a Small Business Development Center, it is our mission to serve small businesses through one-on-one consulting and workshop-style training. We look forward to continuing to support small businesses in Sacramento and will be able to provide much-needed technical assistance, particularly to our minority-owned businesses. We appreciate the city's confidence in our organization and our program, and know we will be a solid resource for businesses as they navigate the many challenges presented by COVID-19. Our center is grateful for your support and stands ready to serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank everybody here, the Mayor Steinberg, members of city council. I want to thank you all for the, by the way, sorry, this is Richard Lewis, President and CEO of Broadway Sacramento, Broadway on Tour and Broadway at Music Center. Once again, I just want to thank everybody here for the financial support, support in general for the arts and the creative economy, but in particular, the financial support that you've already provided to us. And, and I'm, I'm calling to encourage the additional support that, that's, that's on the table. We know about the economic impact of, of the creative economy and certainly what, what Broadway Sacramento is able to do in terms of parking revenue, restaurants, the number of employees, the hotel rooms. And, and I have to say that, you know, because of your actions to date, the Sacramento arts scene will be better prepared to return to the stage, which we anticipate doing on March 30th with Escape to Margaritaville, and I'm sure at that time, we'll all be ready to escape to Margaritaville. That was it. Just wanted to say thank you for all of your support, and thank you for your, your, your ongoing support.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good evening, council. This is David Nelson, Director of Policy for the Sacramento Asian Chamber of Commerce, and just wanted to speak to item number five that's on the consent calendar, to thank the council and city staff for their tentative to the need to support our small businesses during this issue of COVID-19. I'd also like to acknowledge the work of the SAC IEDC and the 15 organizations under this contract that will help our small business community within the city over the next four months related to COVID-19 issues. We, we understand that this work needs to be completed by December 31st of this year, and we're really looking forward to combining all the consultative, consultative services that we have, along with our technical, technical assistance webinars. So just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the Sacramento Asian Chamber, and we look forward to working with city staff to not only meet but exceed all the expectations in this contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Chris Rack. I am the President of Unite Your Local 49, and I'm actually speaking tonight regarding item number six, which is the CARES Act money for Visit Sacramento. We represent hundreds of hotel workers here in Sacramento, including Maria Malgosa, who I believe will be speaking shortly, and we don't oppose the CARES Act money going to Visit Sacramento. But we did want to talk about a disturbing trend in the industry that is of concern to us, that the middle of a pandemic, when guest safety is paramount, more and more hotels are stopping the practice of daily room cleaning of occupied hotels. Our members tell us that when the guest ultimately leaves out a room that's been occupied for several days, it's a nightmare to clean, and it makes it that much more difficult for the room cleaners to implement all of the enhanced cleaning that is needed to keep everyone safe. I'm pleased to say that this Visit Sacramento agenda item has given us the opportunity to have a dialogue with, with folks in the industry, and I want to thank Councilmember Guerra and Mayor Steinberg for their engagement on this issue. We would like to continue this dialogue and ensure that the guidelines that are laid out by the California Department of Public Health would say that daily cleaning of rooms is the, is a key point in keeping people safe, that those guidelines are followed, and that as Visit Sacramento gets additional funding to bring folks to our city, we can ensure that it's done so safely. Thank you for your time, and good night.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Mayor Steinberg and members of city council, this is Tracy Schall, and I'm calling tonight on behalf of the 15 nonprofit organizations that came together under the Sacramento Inclusive Economic Development Collaborative CARES proposal before you this evening. We would like to take this opportunity to thank you for supporting our efforts to assist those most impacted by COVID-19, small minority-owned businesses located in the most disadvantaged corners of our city. This program was designed with one goal in mind, provide our small business owners with the access to free professional services and expertise to offset the direct impacts that this pandemic has had on their businesses. By supporting this comprehensive portfolio of technical assistance, one-on-one consulting, and community engagement and outreach, you are investing in our city's aging commercial corridors while lifting up our minority-owned businesses that are the lifeblood for the residential neighborhoods in which they serve. Combining the efforts of our key geographical partners, the Nine P Bids, with the expertise and authenticity of the chambers of commerce and hacker lab, this program will provide the best pathways forward to stabilize the losses that these businesses have suffered over the past five and a half months, and will also help to provide free, much-needed resources so that these businesses can get back on their feet and support the neighborhoods they love so much. I would also like to acknowledge the city's economic development staff for their partnership and leadership during this process. The SAC IEDC recognizes the tremendous amount of time, effort, blood, sweat, and tears that the CARES program has required, so we thank you, and we look forward to working with you on, on next steps. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, thank you. Hello. My name is Marina Texera. I am the third-generation owner of the Torch Club and Sacramento on 15th and I. I wanted to start by thanking the council and the city for their acknowledgement and support of the local arts industry through the emergency actions taken so far, as well as opening up this discussion to further ensure that our city's arts scene can survive this unprecedented catastrophe. My family's business was established here in Sacramento in 1934, and it's been a popular community spot for everyone from politicians to longtime residents to returning tourists and travelers alike. For the last 50 years, we have maintained the status of being one of the only venues in the city to host more than 700 shows a year, thousands of musicians, local and internationally known, as well as countless community fundraisers and benefits for local causes in the city. Our staff is considered family to our clientele, and most have been with us in upwards of 10 years or more. Because of our close proximity to the collective of major venues in our city, such as the Memorial Auditorium, the Convention Center, Golden One Arena, the Wells Fargo Pavilion, and the Crest Theater, and several more, we have become known to locals and travelers as the place to go and experience the pulse of live music six days a week. With respect to rebuilding and nurturing our devastated tourism industry moving forward, we ask that you consider the longstanding art forward cornerstones of our city. This contribution has, has and will have the most impact on the rebuilding of our city's culture and its thousands of resident employees. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. My name is Eric Ostakon, a board member of the Sacramento Philharmonic and Opera from the fabulous District Number Three, represented by Councilmember Jeff Harris, and a big shout out to my former colleagues, Councilmembers Eric Guerra and Councilmember Steve Hanson. We thank you for your $20 million pledge of the federal stimulus money to arts, culture, creative economy, and tourism, and for the initial allocation of the first $7.5 million to the creative economy. Speaking regarding agenda item number seven, which is in consent, the Sacramento Philharmonic and Opera strongly supports the allocation of the next 6.9 million to the creative economy. This sector creates thousands of jobs and contributes millions of dollars in revenue for the city, while vastly improving the quality of life of our community members and attracting the entrepreneurial creatives needed to ensure future economic development. It is crucial that we secure the survival of the artists and creative organizations that contribute greatly to the quality of life here in Sacramento. The City of Sacramento's support will help keep the Sacramento Philharmonic and Opera and the other amazing artists and arts organizations to be an integral part of the fabric of Sacramento and provide for stability and sustainability. We urge your strong support, and we thank you for your consideration. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. I would like to discuss topic number seven, the CARES Act Relief Fund for Creative Economy and Recovery Program. My name is Elliot Presswich. I'm the co-director of the Capital Venue Coalition and Unification for Sacramento's Independent Entertainment Venues, and the Executive Director of the Crest, Crest Theater Sacramento. First off, I want to thank you for your consideration and support of private sector creative spaces during the first round of CARES Act allocation. Without the city's support, we would genuinely be in a dire situation, which may include the permanent closure of many of the city's venues and artistic spaces. As you are well aware, these venues are the first to close and will be the last to reopen fully. These times are indeed unprecedented, and we are greatly appreciative of you and your responsiveness to the concerns and challenges that independent venues face. Our long-term goal as a coalition is to foster the local creative scene in the Northern California region. We understand that you share this goal, and we look forward to working with you to this end and stand ready to assist in any way we can. With the City of Sacramento's continued support and partnership, we look forward to many more years of showcasing the diverse programming for which this city has become so acclaimed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers on the consent calendar.
Thank you all for the public testimony. Let's hear from the members, starting with Councilmember Steve Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very excited that today we have several CARES Act items in front of us, and I know other people have worked on them as well, but in particular, I just want to mention the Visit SAC item number six and the CARES Act supplemental funding for the creative economy. It's very important that we continue to support these sectors that were so significantly impacted by the COVID crisis and the stay-in-place order, as well as all of the ongoing challenges from this pandemic. I wanted to thank our city staff particularly for the hard work that they've done. Mr. City Manager, you, Michael Jasso, Jody Ulrich, Ray Gargano, our Creative Economy Commission, and we heard from Steve Winlock, and I'd like to give a special shout out to my appointee, Maya Wallace. They moved very quickly and were able to help hand out through a grants-making panel process a significant amount of money to organizations, but also to local artists. And if you look at that list, those artists do span the entire city, and they did that, I think, extremely well. I, I know as we put this next tranche of money out for the creative economy grants, I'd just like to, one, continue to have outreach be a priority. There are some folks who were able to get technical assistance with their grant applications. I think that proved to be extremely helpful to folks especially who haven't had to participate in these processes before. I also want to ensure that as we go out in every round of granting that our equity principles are adhered to and prioritized, particularly in the creative economy process where the commission itself adopted an equity statement. And as, as we look towards this next round, ensure that all grantees, especially those large grantees, do adhere and provide information as to how they're going to implement our equity statement. Some venues were able to receive very large grants of up to $100,000 because of their losses, particularly music venues and congregate facilities. Those ones in particular, I would hope, will continue to advance our equity principles as they work to recover from the CARES Act or from the COVID emergency. So thank you, Mr. City Manager, city staff, mayor, colleagues. I think it's a very good thing that we're doing, ensuring that our creative sector is not obliterated in this crisis, much like we've done for small businesses, working on homelessness and many other issues. So, and as far as Visit Sacramento, this is extremely important to ensure that our new Convention Center Theater and many of the employees that rely on those businesses are able to get reestablished once the pandemic is over. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Councilman Hanson. Your leadership, especially on the creative economy piece, but all of it. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to start off with number seven here on the, the creative economy, and also thank Commissioner Isela Perez for, for her work, you, you to the, the team there on the commission that jumped right in, and also to thank, you know, Commissioner Maya Wallace for helping upstart her there and getting that learning curve going quickly. You know, the, the, the great thing about the, the creative economy funding is that there was a lot of focus on the racial equity, the, the distribution throughout the city, and making sure that we had artists throughout the entire part of our city that could take a benefit from that. And, and I think that's going to be helping the tourism part of our city, because as we continue to be more vibrant, to show excitement, I think that's going to help our sector, which leads me to number six, that all of these go hand in hand, you know, the, between our Philharmonic, our other art centers, our museums, artists, being able to also support the, the tourism industry in our hotel sector, you know, Visit Sacramento, Mike Testa, Seremo Museum team, you know, they have been doing a tremendous job of trying to draw in the, the tourism, and we know people are, are spending money on tourism. They're driving up to, to Tahoe and the Sierras, they're cutting through the Bay Area, and it's a driving type of attraction. So we got to do our best to be able to pull and win on that tourism piece. So being able to fund Visit Sacramento is critical. But right now, our hotels are at 17% capacity. We, I think, got a peak at 30%, which unless we continue to show an image of excitement, but also safety and cleanliness in our industry, that is going to be critical. So I want to thank the, the, both our, our city team, the, the workers, the hotel workers who have suffered tremendously, many of are been unemployed and not been able to get back to work. I think this effort is going to help them, and also to the hotel industry for being able to, to work together. So a quick question for Tom Pace here on this. Tom, I know that there is still a little bit of ambiguity. Most recently, the County Public Health Order leaves out the specificity on hotel rooms and how they should be cleaned after a guest stay. As we wait for the County Public Health Order, Tom, could you, would you work with our city code enforcement officers so that the state public health recommendations on daily room cleaning is part of the education and outreach to the hotel industry?
Yes, Councilmember Guerra, absolutely.
Well, thank, thank you, and I think that's going to be critical. The more we emphasize and work with our industry about how cleanliness we are, it's going to be critical. Also, Tom, would you, would you mind pulling together just a very informal code enforcement officer meeting with our hotel stakeholders, both the industry and the, the hotel workers, so that, you know, as we move forward, I know the industry's going to change, and things are going to react, but I think we want to send the strongest message that Sacramento is united in this effort to bring back the tourism economy, to help our restaurants, bring people to support our artists, and also to support our hotel workers. Would you be able to help put that together so we can get that message out?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank, thank you, Tom. Again, thank you, Mike Testa, and all of the, the, Jody and Ray and all the folks that did amazing work, and all our city staff. And also, thank you to Mr. Mayor for putting together and working with the industry as well and, and trying to get to a, a place where we're all working together. I appreciate your leadership on that as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you so much. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things really quickly, three things maybe. Want to say thank you to the staff for all of this work. On item number four, which is the technical assistance going out to the chamber and the Asian Chamber, if we could get back as an information item in mid-October and like mid-November, a report back on how that's going, I think this is a large investment that we're making, rightly so. It's a, one of the most important investments to make sure everything else is working. So if I could add that as direction to the motion, I think it was Mr. Hanson made, that we get those two reports. The other thing overall on, on the CARES money, which is again fabulous, I would ask Mr. Jasso when we might be able to get back kind of an overall report by geography and ethnicity of where the money went, so we could take a look and, and pass it through kind of the equity test.
Sure. So, thank you, Councilmember, and also, with respect to the report, I think we can do that within the next couple of weeks. If not sooner, we'll try to get it on the agenda as soon as possible. We have that for each of the individual programs, and we're gathering it, so I think it probably makes sense for collectively, and I see Leslie nodding, and I know our staff lists it on here as well, kind of a robust report about in general how the dollars have been distributed to organizations and geographies.
Yeah, and I think by, if, as specific as we can get by neighborhood, which is the geography, obviously, by type of organization, and who's running these organizations, and, and hopefully within the proposals, who it benefits. So as much, as much as you can put together data together to give us a, a specific picture of what we've invested in.
Sure. And then also, if I can address Councilmember Geta's earlier question about reporting back, I think it was Councilmember Geta, about reporting back about how the technical services.
No, that was me.
Sorry.
I know, yeah, we look alike. You get mixed up all the time.
You're both together on the same place on my, on my screen. So, they're, they, part of their contracts do include regular reporting requirements.
Okay, but I'd like it to come back to the council as an information item as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chenier. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry that it is a little loud noise. I just wanted to chime in and say that even though this is on consent, there's a lot of really important items. The Visit Sacramento stuff is so important, and I'm just grateful to the staff for moving that all forward. So really important things, and good job on the city's part to get the CARES money out the door.
Thank you so much. I just want to sum up if I might, because you're right, it's on consent, and maybe, you know, it shouldn't be, because it is of vital importance to our city, especially during this pandemic. And I, I want to thank the, my colleagues for working so hard on working this out. I want to thank the city staff led by Howard and Michael and the Economic Development Team and the city attorney and the clerk, and everybody who, and the auditor, everybody who took part in this unique and complicated project here. It's $89 million, of which over 80 is going out into the community. And some have asked, well, is why, why art? Why the creative economy? Why tourism? And the reason is pretty simple. These sectors are part of the underpinning of growing our modern economy here. They're essential, not just for our tax base, but also for how we feel about the vibrancy and the vitality of our community. And I know that we are among the only cities in the country that have put this kind of emphasis on the creative economy and tourism through its CARES investment, and I'm very proud of that. And finally, I just want to say that although this is one-time money, and it is going to require a lot of work for us together to build a tax base in such a way that we can generate this kind of money every year on the natural, but this investment strategy is exactly the prototype and the example of what we want to do annually in our city. This should not just be one-time, whether it's Measure U, whether it's General Fund Growth, whether it is defining inclusive economic development as a core responsibility of our city in the way we did it together over these last five months. This stands out, and it stands out in a very positive way, and we should aspire to continue this. Every opportunity we can, from whatever source of resources, because the community needs it, the community wants it, and the community loves it, and it helps uplift us all. So I'm really, really happy and proud tonight. And maybe the fact that it's on consent is just And maybe the fact that it's on consent is just a signal that we dealt with all the controversy upfront and we're ready to go. That speaks well of all of you and it speaks well of our city. So thank you. Let us call the roll on the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Ashby. Yes. Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. That is unanimous. Very good, everyone. Thank you again. Let's move on to the discussion calendar where we do have one item. Who is presenting on this item?
Good evening, Mayor. This is Davina Smith from the Office of Cannabis Management.
Ms. Smith, go, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. So this evening, we are asking you to amend section 5.150.350 of the City Code to raise the number of storefront dispensary permits from 30 to 40. We're also asking you to adopt a resolution establishing lottery procedures for unallocated storefront dispensary permits. These procedures call for a lottery composed solely of core members. This lottery will present five permit opportunities in 2020, five more in 2021, and five alternates for each lottery will be chosen. Each core member picked in the lottery has three years to open a storefront or that opportunity passes to the first alternate that was chosen in that lottery. Now, each of these storefront dispensaries must remain at least 51% core owned and 51% core profit sharing for 10 years. These are all items that were discussed at that January 14, 2020 workshop held in front of your council. And that was the direction that the Office of Cannabis Management received to move forward on this item. Due to COVID-19, unfortunately, we've had to develop two sets of logistics in our procedures for actually conducting the lottery. One of those is specific to social distancing requirements. And if adopted, we intend to hold that first lottery on October 12 there in council chambers. It'll be livestreamed and all lottery entrants will be invited to view the lottery via Zoom. A minimum of city staff will be present to conduct the actual lottery and the winners will be announced at that time. I certainly can talk more about this and I'm happy to answer questions, but I will conclude my presentation at this time and answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay.
Have a question, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Carr.
Davina, the first lottery, is it just for the first five dispensaries or are we doing all 10?
No, your first item was correct, Councilmember. It's going to be first five, five permits will be picked for this year and then five next year.
So after we do the first five this year, we'll have a chance to alter our procedures for the next five?
That is in the, that is within your authority. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So members, I know I have Councilmember Chenier and Gara and others up. Do you want to hear from the public testimony first or would you rather? Or would you rather speak now?
Go to the public.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the only reason it might be good to speak now, some of the questions, or at least my questions, might answer some of what the public will say. I don't know how many speakers that we have. But my questions are basically why we made some decisions about how we're doing this. But I'm also happy to wait.
Okay, how many speakers do we have, Madam Clerk?
I have three callers on this item.
Let's hear from the callers and then we'll have the discussion. Go, go right ahead.
May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Nawa Totame, a graduate of Sacramento Green Equity Program. I'm happy to be here this evening and speaking in front of you guys. I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to be a cannabis business owner. I'm a newly cannabis business owner, Equilibrium, the CEO and the founder. I'm excited to be able to open my business here in Sacramento, being a member and a graduate of a 95823 in District 7. So I am happy to be able to start my business. I have concerns when it comes to the lottery process being of our, of our current climate in the United States and within Sacramento, being that we came into the program, Sacramento Green Equity, ready to open our businesses and we've been, what we would consider dragged along in the process with new, would not have an opportunity besides being in a winner luck or draw. Some of us have come in here ready with investors and ready to start, but yet we're put in a pot of tons of individuals that may not be ready, that may not have an opportunity to be able to contribute to Sacramento's growing, growing economy. So we ask this time, yet we are appreciative of this opportunity to be a new member of contributing to Sacramento's economy. We ask for the next round of five dispensaries that open, that there may be new procedures and processes that, that are looked into for us to be able to start these businesses. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This is Malachi Amend, Director of the Institute for More. We want to thank the mayor, council and city staff for leadership and taking on the hard work to address the complete absence of lack-owned dispensaries in proportion to their arrest rates in Sacramento. You know, I know that it's a difficult process and Davina Smith was, you know, working with the policy handed to her and we really appreciate the excellent job that she's been doing. She's really been doing an excellent job with what she's been handed. However, you know, it becomes necessary to repeat what stakeholders have pointed out numerous times and that is lottery is a fundamentally racist approach to awarding dispensary license. None of the current 30 operators had to depend on a gambling scheme to obtain their positions or monopoly of licenses that one entity now enjoys. And they certainly were not harmed, unfortunately, by criminalization. But you know, since we're here and the city is now vested in a lottery process for extending the dispensary cap, we're urging the mayor and council to reserve the option to consider other approaches to achieving equity during a second round. After we get through this first round, on the second round, let's look at another way to have the additional five dispensaries not rely on mere luck of the draw. And so to level the playing field and prevent foul play, we're asking that the following amendments be adopted. And that is that the second round license award approach encourage and weighs core participants' efforts to form investment groups and profit sharing models.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Sure, that, that creates ownership shareholder position to, you know, help core participants participate and then to make sure that there are safeguards to prevent any entity from.
Thank you for your comments.
Stacking the lottery entrance and foul play.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers on this item.
Okay, let's, let's turn it to the city council for discussion. I know I have some questions, but let's go first with Councilmember Chenier. Jay, you're muted.
Thank you for the work on this, Davina. I know it's been a long time coming. Do you, and this is slightly tangential, but do you have the statistics that you had given me around core graduates? How many CUPs, how many are operating right now? I just think that's worth going through very quickly because it is, I believe, for a brand-new program, a success story.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Chenier. Yes, I do have that. And I've actually just, we recently looked at them today and updated them. We currently have 53 business opportunity, business permits that have been submitted by core members. So and that's 30 steps. So let me back up. 53 BOPs submitted by 37 discrete core members. So some core members have submitted multiple applications. We currently have 13 core BOPs that have issued, meaning 13 businesses are being operated by core members, including one dispensary, which is pretty exciting. Considering that when this program started, there were none. I mean, it's, it's really amazing what, what the city of Sacramento has been able to do in the year, year and a half of the program's operation.
Great. So I, I, I just want to say congratulations on that. I know it's, it's only a start, but I think it's a really important start, particularly, as I said, given that it was a brand-new program. I, I have, I have a number of concerns which kind of echo what some of our speakers have said. And I think it's important to know the process that you all went through, particularly with our city attorney's office, to get to this lottery. You know, my feeling frankly is we're, we're leaving some loopholes here where someone who has not really gone through the core program, but could be core certified, could enter the lottery. Is that correct? And if so, could you kind of explain how that could happen? I, I want, I want us to be very transparent about what this process is.
Certainly. So we've been advised that we need to have a process where not just core graduates are invited to participate in the lottery, but all those who are core certified, meaning they have been certified by our core facilitators as either classification one or classification two. And just to remind everybody, classification one is someone who has previously or currently resides in a low-income household and was either arrested for a cannabis-related crime or convicted in Sacramento between 1980 and 2011. Or they're an immediate family member of that person. Classification two is someone who's lived in a low-income household for at least five years between 1980 and 2011 in 11 discrete zip codes. I can certainly name off those zip codes. But I think we all know those, those communities that were most affected by the war on drugs. And so anybody who has been certified as either classification one or two will be eligible to enter the lottery. So it is, I am sympathetic to some of the callers' positions that people who have been in, in the program for, you know, since the beginning and have worked hard and gone through their classes and done everything they could to be business-ready, they're in the same position as someone who gets certified tomorrow.
And so do we, I don't know if, which of our wonderful city attorneys could answer this question, but why is it that we can, we've invested in individuals, they have put in a sweat equity in the program and they may very well get beat out by somebody who qualifies or is certified, but has not participated at all? Ms. Akala Wood or who, who can answer that? Because it just doesn't seem fair to me.
City Attorney?
Chenier?
Yeah.
Suzanne Wood. I don't, I'm not able to turn on my video. It says the host has turned my video off, but I hope you can hear me, okay?
We hear you.
We've got several, thank you, Mindy. We've got several of our staff on board so they can jump on and supplement anything I say. One of the proposals were to prepare some pre-qualifying requirements for individuals to participate in this lottery. Our opinion was that that was, would be different criteria that was required of existing permit holders. And without sufficient justification for it, it would, we required that we determined that that would not be constitutional as presented.
So I, I'm assuming then, and, and the other, the other side of that coin, for me anyways, is we want to, I certainly want to make sure that those who get the permits have the highest chance of success. I think we all want that. But given the lottery, there's no assurance that those who move forward will have those skill sets. And I understand the tension because you can also make the case that the first 30 never had to prove anything either. They, or we didn't ask them. It was, at that point, it was just basically a cattle call of if you want, come, come in and do it. And the 30 was really a number plucked out of the air by a former city council before even Angelique and I got on the council. It was a long time ago. So I, I'm assuming that the, the pre-qualification, the ability to show a business plan, the ability to show capital, any of those things really is not, not going to be part of this, at least for somebody who had, to get the ability to enter the lottery and win one of these coveted places, correct?
Correct. And it was really, once a decision was made by the city to proceed with the lottery proceeding to determine which businesses would be eligible, then it became a matter of making sure that the playing field was, was level and not additional requirements put on there. If the council were to direct it additional, that we go back and look at how else it could be done for the next five without the use of a lottery system, and that might open up some additional paths.
Okay. Well, I, I want to make sure, so at one point, and I talked to Davina about this, people have three years, correct, to get going, once they're, once they're chosen. And at some point, like my, I was ready to say, why don't we just do all 10 now? Because we don't know how long it's going to take people. It's not going to flood the market tomorrow. Different people are at different places as far as having facilities, having financial backing, things like that. But, but I guess what I would rather do is stay with the five to give us an opportunity to fine-tune the process. And Davina, I know you guys have done a tremendous amount of work, so this is not a criticism of that. But I think we need to find a way around the fears of, of our attorneys or the thoughts of our attorneys about where, where this lies. So I'm, I'm actually happy to move the staff recommendation with also the direction that once the first five are chosen and the five alternates, the city do everything possible and would love a report back about how we can support those first five because that's, that's going to determine how we go with this program. We, we need those folks to be successful. We want them to be integrated into the industry in a, in a major way. Because I think over time, we would, I, I know we want to continue this program, but it would be great if it became self-supporting by those individuals who win the lottery and then at some point start paying, paying the BOT and everything else we've got going. So I'm, I'm going to move the staff recommendation with that direction. And we'd love a report back, at least on an information purpose, of what we can do to support those who win the lottery. So we give them the highest chance of success. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you. Councilman Gueda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jay, if you could just go back to, I think, what did you, as, as far as the second lottery, how was your motion for this second part of the lottery? Did you bring that up?
Well, I think, I think that I'm just leaving it with direction that we work with council, with legal council and city council and, and our office with Davina to look, to fine-tune it so that we can, I think, be more specific about who gets chosen based on their experience in the core program and some set of success markers. I, I don't know what that looks like yet, but we'll certainly work together to get there.
Great. Thanks. I'll, I'll go ahead and second the motion. The only other staff direction I'd like to make sure is that staff come back to us with what they, what you were doing to ensure that no gaming of the current lottery system takes place. Make sure that there isn't any, I know in the ordinance, we're looking at profit sharing and making sure that, that you essentially don't have applicants or shelves for other, other folks who, who maybe are better capitalized and not intended for the core program. So I just want to make sure that we're, we get a report back on the safeguards we've done so that this first lottery, the true five, are the five we were intending to, are part of.
So I'm happy to take that as part of the motion, Eric.
Great.
Quick question. So is there any, Davina, is there anything preventing Eric from being the 49% person on multiple applications?
So the, the applications that go in for the lottery itself, they're individuals, so they're just one person. When, if that person wins, then they can go to, to Councilmember Gueda and say, hey, you promised to, to back me for 49%. Let's form our company and go forward. We, you know, we do know and we probably expect that, you know, people will offer to invest in, in multiple people if they win. We've made it very clear and we have it on our application that you can only be an owner of any proportion at all of one storefront dispensary. So if you own any portion of a storefront dispensary anywhere in the city of Sacramento, you cannot invest in any other one. You cannot be an owner of anyone.
Great, thanks. Sorry, thank you, Eric.
No, thank you, that's good. You know, it's, as one of the speakers mentioned, you know, the gambling system here that we have, I guess you better pick your horse, right? And choose the one you're looking for. So, so good, I'm glad that we're seconding the motion there. So first, you know, I too want to see the, a better system when we come back on the second round of those that are, that are ready to start. Not only that, but just from, you know, different sectors of the industry. We want to make sure that they're prepared and ready to be successful. And because if not, the unintended consequences or the impacts to the surrounding, you know, business neighbors or community. We want to make sure that they're successful by getting the best qualified core applicants to be eligible. So I like the comments that were made by the public on this issue. And second, you know, the other thing I want to just, I can't stop by emphasizing, but that particularly when it comes to storefront dispensaries, now we have citywide balance and equity because as I was, as it's been told by many of my constituents here, that, you know, they said, Eric, we're not saying no, we don't want them here. We just want, we just want, you know, others to share the love, as were the direct words. So, you know, for a long time, District Six has had a third of the industry, when it comes to storefront dispensary, completely disproportionate to it. We've done measures, thanks to Councilmember Harris, to look at expanding opportunities and actually making it easier and cheaper to find places for people to start their economy. I would also like, Devina, you know, just to follow up, that we sit down with the Urban Partnership to look at how we look at the other supply chain parts of the business and industry and get ahead of making actually true methods of giving future, not just the next five, but future core participants a real shot at the industry. What are the things that we can do to upskill them so that they're, that they're getting involved in other parts of the industry as it evolves, right? The gold miners didn't make it rich, but the people that were around the industry were the ones who succeeded. I think there's a lot of opportunity there. So with that, I think the core program, you know, I want to also thank Malachi. I remember the, and Councilmember Chenier, the first meeting we pulled together at Core, about Core, a while back ago. And the fact that we're making these, this level of progress now is positive. I just want to make sure we're doing, you know, balanced regional equity. And some of this, again, as Jay said, a lot of it happened before any of us were here. But now that we're moving forward, we have to have a strong reputable industry. So with that, thank you, Devina, again, for all your work in this, and we'll move forward there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brashby or Tim Ashby, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, this is, you know, for me, marijuana is an issue I often vote against because I think we're oversaturated. I think we treat it differently than other industries in terms of letting the market lead, and we try very hard to manipulate this industry, and I don't think it's working for us. And I'm a little torn because Devina is so new and she's trying so hard, and she's put together a lot of good, nice components to this that I think are improvements. And I'd like to give her a chance, but it just doesn't quite go far enough for me. For one thing, I would, you know, I would rather we had fewer marijuana industry businesses in Sacramento than we have currently. But if we're going to add, the only thing that has convinced me to consider adding is trying to create equity and parity and deal with core participants or people who would be eligible for Core. Not only do I think this does not do that, but you have created a rule that is a good rule, but would only exist for the core participants. Because right now, we know Sacramento B's reported it a million times that there are multiple entities that are owned by one person and then, or one group of people, or brothers, or friends, or whatever, and they own multiple storefronts or multiple businesses in Sacramento. So we're just going to let them do that, but we're going to have a different set of rules for Core Group. That doesn't make any sense to me. I just feel so strongly that we have a lot of cleanup work to do on the existing marijuana businesses and that that should naturally create more opportunity that Core should fill in. Another problem I have is that it feels to me like the Core Participants, who we were supposed to be moving to the front of the line, have actually, we're like telling them, you're welcome. And really, all we've done is given them opportunities to work for people who already own these businesses, who do not look ethnically like them, which is the opposite of what we said we were going to try to do with this program. So I guess, you know, I'm having a hard time because, Mayor, when you brought forward the idea of adding more for Core, I supported that. It's probably the first time I voted yes on a marijuana item in a long time. And theoretically, I really want to do that. I really want to create a space where we correct some of the, or right some of the wrongs from the past. I don't think this does that. And, you know, I know I heard Councilmember Chenier say, you know, some of the fears of our attorneys, those are not fears. Those are like constitutional problems about discriminating against people, and we can't do it. And I just don't, I don't think we're leveling the playing field at all. I think we're adding new and harder and stricter rules on the Core Participants than we had for the first batch of people, which is exactly what we always do to neighborhoods that are left behind, and I don't want to do it again. So I'm definitely going to vote no. I feel like this is not all the way ready to go. I wish we would take more time on issues like this. I'm sure it has votes because of the way our system is set up with Lawn Ledge and Lawn Ledge having four votes and coming to here and only really needing one more, and things are sort of half-baked. But this is really not ready, and you're going to go use up the few pieces that we have where we could actually help people, and we're not going to end up helping the right people. So I'm definitely a no for today. I would much rather see this item come back better vetted and with more input from the Core Participants themselves and, more importantly, with cleanup language on the existing businesses, allowing us an opportunity to get more people involved there.
So, thank you. Councilmember, let's hear from Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I first have a couple of questions I want to ask of Devina. Maybe she's the one that can answer these questions. You talked about the thirteen BOPs that are issued, and they're issued, but are those, are they in operation right now?
Yes, they are, Councilmember.
Okay, so in, how many do we have ready to move? How many of the core graduates are ready to move into operation right now? Even though they may not have been issued a BOP?
So when you say, ready to, ready to move, you mean, ready to open businesses?
Yes.
Well, they, you know, they have not, they, as I mentioned earlier, so we have the fifty-three BOP applications have been applied for. So they are moving through the process of, you know, getting their security plan, getting their tenant build-out, doing all those things. So I don't have numbers of how many of those are weeks away from getting their BOP versus months away from getting their BOP.
So are those fifty-three all?
Thirty-seven of those people basically could open a business tomorrow once they move through the process. I mean, Rick, is that what you're asking? Like, how many people are kind of actively about to start a business?
Well, are the fifty-three all associated with Core graduates?
Yes.
Okay, so of that fifty-three, the thirty-seven, Jay, I hear you saying are ready to move into businesses.
Well, thirty-seven, there's not fifty-three individuals, there's fifty-three applications.
I got that, I got that.
So, yeah, thirty-seven people are going through the process, and hopefully we'll be opening businesses soon.
And those thirty-seven have the opportunity to compete for the five, for the five spots that we have, right?
With the exception of one of our Core graduates who already has an ownership interest in a dispensary.
So they just, by going through the lottery, they have to now compete with everybody else? And what's the whole playing field? How many are they competing against?
We currently have a hundred and fifty-nine Core graduates, and that is the number we know. We don't know how many people may come in and try to get certified between now and the time of the lottery.
Okay, so of the, of the businesses, because you said they can't invest in more than one storefront dispensary, if they're found to have invested in more than one, what are the consequences for that?
So if, you mean, as of an active, an operating business?
Yes.
So then we would probably go through the permit revocation process, that they have violated the conditions of their permit.
Which means what? What are the consequences?
We would pull their permit.
Okay, so.
Revoke it.
That, that's the punishment for those who have violated the permit process is that it is pulled and they can no longer operate within that business, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I guess maybe you can't answer this question, but maybe Jay can answer this question because I'm trying to understand, what's the process of, what will be different between what we're doing now in fine-tuning the process? What's the difference in what we do now versus next year? I'm not quite certain how we, how we, how we fine-tune the process if everything is the same. If our lawyers are in the same position, the core candidates are ready to move forward, what's different? How do we fine-tune the process?
I, I'm not, for me, Rick, I'm not convinced that we can't figure out a way that those folks who have not only been certified with Core but have gone through the process have a leg up on others. If I, if I'm a Core person, I got certified, but I didn't go through the process, I don't think I should have the same equal footing as someone who spent however many weeks going through the schooling on this, going through the educational part of it. So I want to.
So you, like I, want to give some advantage to those who have gone through the process?
Correct.
We want to give them some advantage, but this lottery process doesn't allow us to do that.
Correct. I mean, the person still has to be certified, one or two, the way Devina was talking about. So they have to come from a neighborhood, they had to, you know, be in, in, you know, have been affected, impacted by the war on drugs, there's those things. So those are the right individuals, but I think people who have done the sweat equity part of going through the educational part should be first in line. And I think, I'm not convinced we can't figure out a way to do that.
So, Rick, go ahead, are you?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It happens when you have your office at home and you have to take care of the doorbell and other phone calls and all those things.
Okay.
It's okay, I just had a bear walk by my window a few minutes ago.
So, yeah, I kind of feel more like Councilwoman Ashby right now in that I don't know that I'm ready to support this process where I don't know that we're really getting to the equity and parity that we want to get to. And I'm trying to figure out how we do it right now. I don't want to wait till the next five, which are next year, and I don't even understand the process of how we're going to fine-tune the process. And so, you know, if, as often as we sit down and really talk about this, as often as we put this in a workshop, the fact that we don't have a committee that's actively working on this to improve the process, I think those are all problematic for me. So I'm trying to figure out how to support this, but I don't see the foundations that are in place to support it and that we can't guarantee that the Core representatives who have gone through the process can now end up with a business. And they, or they have to wait till next year in order for that business. They've got everything ready to go, but they didn't win the lottery, so they got to now wait a whole nother year after going through that process. So I don't know that I'm, somebody's going to have to convince me differently than the way I feel right now because I don't feel like the process is where it needs to be.
So I want to, I'm going to step in for, just for a moment, I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor after I make a couple of comments. But let's be clear why we're in this dilemma. It appears we're in this dilemma because prior to any of our service on the city council, a prior council made a decision to grant thirty permits to dispensary owners, essentially without much of a process, without a process. And so a lottery is very imperfect, but it is a way to get around the legal problem that says if you, if you do it differently than how you did the first thirty, you run into an equal protection problem. Let me, I want to ask the city attorney this question, however. And I'm thinking about how we just distributed the CARES money. We didn't do a lottery among the various businesses that came forward asking for small business assistance. We didn't do that for the creative economy or on the homeless pot or on the workforce development pot. We actually looked at who could use the money for the purpose which it was intended with speed and effectiveness, and we made some decisions. Do we need to do a lottery here? Or could the staff look at all of the Core graduates and others and look at how to sort of package the five best proposals that have the best chance of succeeding with Core being the clear criteria and requisite? Is a lottery necessary? Or is it the easiest way around the equal protection issue with the original thirty?
Mayor, no, a lottery is not necessary. It is what the recommendation was and what we were presented with. So we could change the ordinance to create the criteria the council wanted, however directed. It was just the lottery was presented to our office.
Let me ask another question about the lottery itself, at least this proposal. And I know that Councilmember Geta raised this issue, I'll pull it, the gaming issue, that somebody wins the lottery and they are Core-certified, but essentially the business is run ultimately by somebody else who's better capitalized, who may not be a Core participant. And Devina, I believe you talked about how there is a prohibition against anybody who's operating a dispensary, competing here and operating more than, more than one. But what if it's somebody, some new capital source that is not involved in the current Sacramento cannabis dispensary business? Is there the potential of the same gaming, the concern that Councilmember Geta and others have raised, that under a different set of facts or circumstances, the Core-certified individual might be actually a minor player, so to speak, in a larger, in a larger dispensary ownership structure?
Well, I think that there is certainly a possibility that a dispensary owner from an area outside of Sacramento could look to invest in one of our Core members' dispensaries. So that certainly can happen. As to whether we should look at secret arrangements or other things to determine kind of good-faith efforts and if there's gaming of the system, you know, it's a bit difficult to say definitively that we will catch everybody who's doing that. You know, we do what we can with the information that we collect. We collect a great deal of information, and we parse through it as best we can to determine exactly what's going on and who owns what.
Right.
I can't promise the council a hundred percent that we will, you know, not, not, this won't happen. You know, if someone's got some secret agreement, usually those end up, you know, people, in my experience, usually those go south eventually, and then it all comes out. And, you know, you do what you can to fix the problems at that time.
Okay, so I want to just ask the members who have spoken, the leaders, and those who haven't spoken. I know Councilmember Hanson said he has a thought, and I know we're getting to Vice Mayor Harris. How would you all feel about an RFP for the first five? In the same way, we do a variety of RFAs or RFPs for various public resources or licenses. I would like to hear one's reaction to that idea. Let me turn it to Vice Mayor Harris and Councilmember Hanson, and then we can go back around. Vice Mayor?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Well, you raised some very interesting questions. I certainly would be in favor of trying to promote businesses with the greatest. I certainly would be in favor of trying to promote businesses with the greatest chance of succeeding. Whether it be an RFP process or otherwise. Davina, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. First off, I believe it's, it's said in the staff report that storefront dispensaries are basically the most sought after business operating permit in the cannabis industry. Is that a true statement?
It certainly is in Sacramento.
Okay, so Core graduates could participate in the cannabis industry in various aspects, not necessarily a storefront dispensary, but could be delivery, could be manufacturing, you know, there are many other aspects that Core participants can participate in. We have graduated more people from the Core project than could possibly be dispensary owners since we're only looking at setting up ten storefronts. So necessarily, many people who would like to participate in a lottery or whatever process and get one of those coveted licenses to run a storefront dispensary, very, very few of the Core graduates are actually going to get to that position. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, I think so.
Well, I think it's important to know that we actually created a program to train people in the cannabis industry, but we hold the keys to the marketplace in that we limit the number of storefront dispensaries, which again are the most sought, sought after uh business proposal that people want to participate in. So uh it's a matter of how we winnow down the numbers. And a lottery is one way to do it. If we didn't RFP, then we, we actually are expressing even more control of the marketplace than we would do through a lottery uh situation, putting it up to chance and seeing if people succeed or fail in business, and if they failed, then that uh storefront license would come up, I guess. Uh again, for another Core participant to possibly secure and do business down the road. I'm not sure how this will settle out, but I would say this. The, the, we have this issue because we're controlling the marketplace. Usually the marketplace settles this out. But, but we are playing God here a little bit and saying, okay, we're only going to allow so much. And yet we've trained a hundred and sixty-seven people for ten spots. It, you know, we've created our own problem here. I'm, I'm going to leave my comments at that. I, I think that however this process settles out, a lottery or, or doing a lottery now and then changing it up for the second five, no matter which way we go, we're manipulating a market and manipulating markets definitely leads to problems. I'd probably lean a little more towards the lottery scenario and put it to chance and let people sink or swim. And if they don't make it in business, then somebody else perhaps more competent will come along and snag that license. Thank you, Mayor.
Steve Hanson, please. Steve Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh maybe before you go back on mute, um I'd like to ask the city attorney a question related to your proposal. And I, I don't know if there's a way to design the process, but I do think that we spent a considerable amount of public resources, um state grants and other city time to create the Core program. And if, if it in the end doesn't matter because anybody can now apply for a license, then I, I think that that's problematic for me uh along the lines of what Councilmember Jennings, I think, was saying as well as some of the others. So can we, if we did this, uh A, can we do an RFP program like the mayor said? And if we can, can we have a pre-qualification requirement of having completed um the Core program, which covers responsibility and responsiveness to the type of um RFP that we would have? You're on mute, Susanna.
Uh yes, Councilmember, it's uh, the mayor's proposal would be, as, as the mayor suggested, an RFP process would be an appropriate way potentially for the city to meet its requirements and its desires to advance the Core program. Uh it's, it's uh, as part of the scope would be, you know, how can the applicant uh meet these certain requirements? And then it would, they would be judged on their ability to meet the requirements and advance the Core program forward.
So can the Core program be essentially a pre-qualification process exclusively?
Well, yes. I mean, it, it would only be open for a Core certified applicant.
Not certified, those who completed the Core program.
You, you'd be giving them points based on their response to the uh RFP um and uh determining them just like any other type of RFP, who's the most qualified.
But we can't.
Objections.
But we can exclude other applicants like we do maybe on a bidding process for people that don't participate in certain pre-qualification efforts or apprenticeship programs or other things that we, we do.
Yeah, it, it's not a bidding process. There's a lot more discretion as an RFP where you would be putting out the criteria that the council is seeking to advance its um program.
So, but, but I, 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 I guess that I lean towards this idea that the Core applicants or the Core program graduates should be the exclusive pool to, to be able to take advantage of this because they went through all of those. They went through that process that we created to do this, one. And number two, I guess I, I want to push back on the idea that Vice Mayor Harris said that this is trying to quote manipulate a market or trying to um do something untoward when the market might be able to settle itself. And I think the unregulated market is what we called the black market. And um this is a very highly regulated market for a product that has um a lot of different factors to it, including the federal and state laws that apply to it. So I, I don't quite see it as something where we can just throw the doors open uh because we regulate so much. It's, it, it's not even like there is a business in the city that doesn't have some sort of regulation applied to it. But, but in the end, I would be supportive of path forward that allowed for the Core participants who graduated from the program to essentially have exclusive or predominant access to the first five licenses, if not the full ten, um if it works that way.
Yeah, Councilmember Hanson, I don't see any legal impediment to having that as a pre-qualification for an RFP.
Could I ask, is there a, how about for the lottery, that you're saying that, that pre-qualifying by the same, the same criteria wouldn't work for a lottery?
That was our, uh, that was our objection on constitutional grounds.
So. And, and just before I relinquish, I would just say that to the extent that um we can have a open process that allows people to submit rather than play the odds and present a business plan, et cetera, I think that might be a very effective way to get um the most qualified applicants through rather than just the luck of the draw. I speak as somebody who finds myself to be unlucky in uh competitions like that, so I'd rather have a really good proposal and working with a team than, than just take the chance. So I'll, I'll yield the floor.
Okay, well, so the question, a question on the table, and by the way, I think if we're not ready to vote tonight.
Hey Larry Carr wishes to speak. Larry's waving his hands too.
I'm sorry, Larry. I didn't, I, I'm, Randy is telling me who's, who's up. I'll get you. I, I just want to say that I, the, the way this is going here, which is a very great and important discussion, I'm not sure we should cast a, a vote tonight, but let's figure out what direction we want to give um our staff uh to, to, to come back with, but let's go with Councilmember Carr then Geta.
I'm so torn over this issue because I really want to get some um more dispensaries out there with the people who have been hurt most by cannabis being illegal. So I really want to make that happen really fast because it's been years that we've been talking about this and we're right on the cusp. However, the way we've designed this particular system, I don't think we're going to get to the result that we are looking for. We do RFPs all the time and we have weighted criteria all the time. It's not rocket science. Uh we have uh technical ability is always one of the heavy criterias that we use in evaluating our, our, our RFPs. And we can weight those with technical ability being demonstrated through the Core program. So this, I think it's fairly simple to do the RFP. I wouldn't, Angelique, I wouldn't want to tie this to the cleanup because that might, that takes us down a separate track. But we do, at the same time, we do need to go back and clean up the mess that was created for us uh with the thirty dispensaries. So I'd like to separate those two issues. Davina, do you think you could come back in some reasonable timeframe with a proposal, a RFP proposal that would get us to where we want to be without violating um anyone's rights?
I think that we can, if that's the, the direction of the council, we can certainly bring that back.
Uh I, I would be, as, as much as I want to get these dispensaries out, these five licenses out today, I think it's better that we uh get a process that actually accomplishes what we want to do. I agree with Councilmember Jennings and Angelique Warren, Angelique Ashby on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. Councilman Geta.
Well, look, first of all, I, I find this a little frustrating because Susanna, I don't know if it was during your time or, or Jim was here or what, but the reason we're going down this road is because we had pushed the RFP process to begin with. I know for, this is my, my point about clarifying the, the, the motion. And when I asked for the second about, you know, what, what, how we're going to execute the second part of the, of the, of the, what do you call it, uh, of the five. And, and so, because I'll tell you, for, you know, anybody going into District Six, the standard to get into District Six is a lot higher. There's a lot more engagement from all of the different partners there. We, you know, we want to be able to make sure that anybody who goes in this area is ready and prepared to be successful because of the potential fallout if you, if you're not successful, so. So that, that I think to me is, is a little frustrating here, what, why we're at this point. So I'd like to get some clarification because it seems to me that, that you know, I'm hearing now that we can do the RFP process, but before we were told that this is the only legal way to do it. And I do agree that number one, the number one thing, it's exclusivity in the pool. We're trying to assure exclusivity in the pool. But at least, at least, at least for this councilman, council member, I'll tell you, I, my preference is to have um a, a selection process or those who enter into a pool, even if it is that, who are at the most highest level to succeed. I also agree with Larry, like, look, you know, folks have been gone through the process, they've been waiting, you know, they, they've done their due diligence. You know, uh they're, they're at the, at some point, you know, the, at some point, the, this is just, you know, dragging on to a point where nobody is going to lose, the, the, the folks who are, are prepared and ready may lose the inability to enter into the marketplace too. So there's a risk in that as well too, on, and that's, there's a fairness question in that, so. Um I apologize if I'm a little frustrated here, but, but I'm, I'm concerned about that. So can you please at least explain uh, uh Susanna and Davina, for the non-attorneys here, why this was the, the first process? Because now it seems to me we're going back to where we started, so.
Certainly, I can start in on that, uh, Councilmember. So the, the provision for the lottery has been in the, the code for dispensaries uh for at least two plus years. The council knows that um lottery is the way that food trucks are sort of given out permits and taxi medallions are sort of given out. You're allowed to do that. Uh it's not medallions, but taxi permits. So it's a considered a fair and equitable way of, of giving out an entitlement um in our, in our city code. Uh when we were first looking at this, we certainly were looking at what we called um just a regular lottery, and then um after input from stakeholders, you know, we came across the idea of a, a two-step lottery because people really did want, you know, you certainly had people who wanted the sheer chance of lottery, and then you wanted other people who really wanted to have the work that they had done um be recognized, right, towards that. And so we developed sort of a, a pre-qualification round that would allow for um a business plan submittal. You know, uh sort of what, what, what your plan is, what your budget is. We didn't require any financial, there were no financial requirements, no, show us your investors, show us that you have a location. Just because we thought it was unfair for, you know, the fact that we hadn't had these permits available to suddenly require someone to, to have a a lease on a space as well as three million dollars in investment, so that didn't seem equitable. Um so we didn't require any of that, but we did require people to talk to us about, you know, as a Core member, how would you assist other Core members? How would you sort of engage in this process? How would you be, succeed in business? Those who would reach the, 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 the top qualifying round would go on to the lottery. So basically it was a, a combination of, there's going to be a lot of people who are ready to go thanks to our Core facilitators and the program they've implemented. And so we wanted to make sure that, you know, that, that for all those people who are ready, that they could then, we would blind picking, right, blind luck as to who all those qualified people would be and who would get the, who would get the permits at the end. So through that process, we learned um unfortunately that, that we weren't allowed to do that, that we needed to really kind of adhere closer to health and safety criteria. And so that was sort of the impediment. And so um as the council knows, you know, we were provided that advice, and so that's why we went to just the straightforward lottery. You know, if, if city attorney's position is that we can do an RFP process, we will certainly work very hard with them to develop that and bring it back as soon as possible, if that is the will of the council at this time.
Yeah, I, I, I think what we need to do, and I'll turn it over to Jay in a moment, I, I think we need to give the city attorney especially, um a, and Davina, an opportunity to take this input to come back within a couple of weeks, because I am concerned about what Larry Carr, Councilman Carr referenced a moment ago, and that is that this doesn't become a, a delay that frustrates the, uh, the, the, the overall goal here. But if doing this through an RFP gives us a better chance of working with not only our Core uh graduates, but others as well who meet the criteria to fashion the, the best possibility of success, that may be better than, than um this lottery where you don't know who's going to win and whether or not aside from meeting the most minimum of qualifications, they're actually ready to go, and then they have three years to be able to get up to speed. And so we could be, what you don't want is to be here three years from now with no uh Core applicant, with no Core success stories. I mean, that would be the, the, the worst of all worlds, obviously. So let, let's hear from Jay, who's led in this area for a long, long time as well and see what, what you think.
No, I, I think we're on the right track here. I mean, I, this is really frustrating because I, I don't know where I got it, but the understanding I've had for a long time was we couldn't, we couldn't put requirements on these folks that weren't, the first thirty didn't have. Um and that's why we were doing the lottery. If we can do an RFP, I think that's going to be difficult, but I think it's fine. I, I, I think Mayor, so maybe two things here. One is I'll withdraw my motion and ask Eric to withdraw the second from that. I don't think we're ready for that. But I think the, I think the direction is twofold. One is that we want to make sure that folks who have gotten certified in court and gone through the program or graduated from the program have some kind of leg up, whether it's extra points or a different pool, however that works, that that's, that's what I've heard from all of my colleagues, and I think that's really important. The second thing is if you, if, if you can do an RFP, which is great, I would ask that you work with some of our stakeholders in the community um who have been part of this discussion for a long time. Uh I don't know how many of the folks who've been part of it um would take themselves out of the running, but they can't work on an RFP or the criteria in an RFP if they're then going to apply. So we want to make sure there's no conflict of interest, but I think it's really important, whether it's Malachi or other folks who have been so important in this process, I think they need to be part of it, because I don't want to come back and then start, start taking grief because we didn't ask the right questions or put the right criteria in an RFP and somehow it was slanted towards one group or another. So I, I think those are the two basic criterias that we really need to look at is Core graduates and then involving the community. And I, and I know Davina, that could be hard scheduling wise, but we, we. And I, and I know, Davina, that could be hard scheduling wise, but we, we got to do that as quickly as possible. And if we can do an RFP, Godspeed, let's go do that and then come back and, and get five permits out there.
Okay. Can, let me ask this to Ms. Smith and, and our city attorney. Can you take what you heard today and come back within four to six weeks? Is that reasonable?
So Mayor, I think what we may do, we've had, we've had five stakeholder meetings with our, our core stakeholders about developing sort of that, that dual criteria for our lottery. So I think we can certainly schedule, we're scheduled actually to have a core stakeholder meeting tomorrow. We will, we will talk about this with them, we'll gather additional input. We'll take what we've worked on previously and what we had worked on with our cores, stakeholder people on that dual lottery before. We'll update it and present it to the city attorney and wait for the feedback from, from, from her office.
Okay, I do, I do think, Ms. Susanna Malkala Wood, our city attorney, do you think four to six weeks that we could get this back? Because I just don't want this to to linger for a long time. We want to get it.
We, we've got a full group that's ready to kick it out as fast as we can.
Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, before we close, again, I, I want to emphasize, one, we all agree that core graduates have to have a leg up. But I, I do want to make sure. And Davina, if you want to, if I, if you haven't met some of the the stakeholders that have been working with a lot of the industry, that we look at also the, the business plans and the ability to succeed. Because there's only, there's only 10. So if one fails or whatnot, and then we have to go back to that, you're losing opportunity for the next, you know, four years before you can fill that gap. So I want to, I want to make sure that we're also looking at of the core applicants, how do we make sure that a fundamental piece is they're ready and, and able to be the most competitive in that pool?
Absolutely.
Great.
Okay, so without objection, we're going to then continue this item, but not indefinitely. All right? This has got to come on back soon. And thank you, look, this is hard. Nobody should feel bad here. This is a new arena, obviously. And we're all trying to do the right thing here. So this was a good discussion. This proposal that was before us was not a bad one. Just think that it can be, that it can be better. And, and the main thing is to get, not only to ensure that we achieve the equity, but also that the eventual applicant, the eventual winners, whoever they are, have the best chance to actually succeed. And I think that's part of what we're trying to think through here.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I can, I mean, I want to go back to where Davina started on this, on the number of core, core graduates, over 150 core graduates. 13 of them are running businesses today. 37 of them have applications into running additional businesses. Those are all successes. Took us a long time with a lot of help from the community to get that program up and running. So again, let's just do it right.
Okay. All right. This will be then put over, and that is our agenda for the evening. Are there, is there public testimony on items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have three callers for items not on the agenda.
Go ahead.
May we have our first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
This is Donald Kendrick, and I'm speaking to item number seven. I'm in Council District Four. I'm founder and artistic director of the Sacramento Choral Society and Orchestra. For the past 24 years, our mission has been to provide world-class choral orchestral music for the people of the greater Sacramento region and beyond. We want to thank Mayor Steinberg, Councilmember Steve Hanson, esteemed council members, and the Office of Arts and Culture for securing federal funds to support the arts in our region. We realize that many cities were not as fortunate as Sacramento. For almost 25 years, we've enjoyed a strong partnership with the city, investing $1 million in renting the Sacramento Community Center Theater and Memorial Auditorium for our large classical music performances that have drawn huge numbers of patrons to the downtown area. We have likewise invested $2 million in our professional SCSO orchestra members, as well as professional stage managers and stagehands from the local union. We also engage professional local soloists, narrators, dancers, and even puppets. And we partner regularly with other choruses, like the Sacramento Children's Chorus. Annually, we help 50 sister nonprofits with ticket donations. Our December Children's Matinee Memorial Auditorium attracts 2,500 children, many of whom come from underserved areas. Our partnerships with Make-A-Wish Foundation and St. John's Program for Real Change add great meaning and value to our outreach. We believe that our performances strengthen the Sacramento economy and bring beauty to our lives. They also help us build a wholesome, strong community, making Sacramento a world-class city. And COVID-19 has definitely wreaked havoc on the arts community, and we are working hard to keep the doors open. Your support of the additional relief funds for the arts will help many of our organizations withstand the current pandemic and embrace brighter days ahead for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much, Richard Wake, City Council, District Five. As Councilmember Chenier is very much well aware, we have a very bad, serious situation going on on Riverside Boulevard, up on the levee north of 35th Avenue and south of 35th Avenue, down by where the apartment complexes are. I only have two minutes, so I'm not going to go through the whole litany of things. Councilmember Chenier has more than adequate details if he cares to share. But I will say this, you know what really ticks me off the most about this situation? Is that good people like me, who are donating lots of time and money and effort and food and clothes and water and everything else to help these people, are now having to fight for the safety of their neighborhoods. That is wrong. Furthermore, Councilmember Hanson has known about this situation on the levee for some time. He has refused to talk to one of his constituents in City Council District Four that literally begged for his help. The last, over the last week, two weeks, three weeks, if not longer, I've been talking to apartment complex managers, businesses and residents of three different city council districts where the activity on Riverside Boulevard is spilling over into their neighborhoods. Councilmember Chenier, without further delay, excuses, or any more incessant foot dragging, you and whoever you need to get together with need to immediately clean up the situation on Riverside Boulevard. We have increased felonies, burglaries, windows are getting smashed. People are being threatened with assaults up on the levee. This can no longer happen, Councilmember Chenier. Without further delay, I don't care who you need to get together with, you and the other city council members, the Impact Team or whoever, need to clean it up and come up with a permanent solution so we feel safe in our neighborhood. No more.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment?
Yes, no more delays or excuses, Jay, get busy.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? And this is our last caller. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, yes, my name is Lambert Davis of To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. And I, I wanted to just say, first of all, to Mayor Steinberg, he's on the right side of history. Wells Fargo, which was caught altering and sabotaging Black and women who submitted applications for loans, et cetera, including To the Bay and Back. We, we experienced that with Bank of America as well. And I wanted to say today that To the Bay and Back has developed a situation now where we guarantee a profit. There's not many companies that come to city council and guarantee anything. We guarantee employment for people in Del Paso Heights. We also can guarantee that you can't make a cheesecake with a computer. You have to hire people. And I have made sure our family-owned business has the certification, so that can't be an excuse. We're state-certified as a small business through 2021. We also have a local manufacturer that's interested in mass producing us. And I wanted to say that almost everybody on that city council, including the city manager's office, has tasted our cheesecakes and put in writing that they were outstanding. So I think it's time now to fund To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. I think it's time to use us as an early win. It would be an inspiration to Del Paso Heights to see To the Bay and Back get funded. We don't have any negativity around us, no scandals. And by the way, Better Business Bill has just endorsed us and asked us to renew. So I'm asking whoever's on that council to speak up for us because we need your help to get funded. We're going into the fall, the holidays, the elections, and we're ready to go.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment?
Yeah, thank you. I hope people on the diet speaks for us today and behind the scenes.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
All right, thank you very much. Are there members that want to put forward any ideas and questions? I do have a couple, I think. Who was up, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protem Ashby and then Councilmember Geta.
Okay, go right ahead, please.
I just have a quick one. I just, today is my 18th wedding anniversary. And so I want to say happy anniversary to my husband, who has spent 10 of those 18 years dealing with me on this council. And this is not our first anniversary council meeting. So you know that he is a patient soul. So to my husband, Zach, I love you. Thank you for 18 years.
Angelique, the first 20 years at a heart.
And this is up to.
Oh, good, good to know, Larry, thank you.
All good. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is also something Councilmember Hanson and I talked about earlier. There is an effort to repeal a groundbreaking effort to address the issue of tobacco in California, much of it led by what our city efforts have done. And so I'd like to have our, our loan-led staff get to look at those repeal efforts and see if the city can join in on combating those repeal efforts. I don't know who, Councilmember Hanson, if you wanted to add to that. I know this was something you've been fighting for, for a long time.
Thank you, Councilmember Gera. I just, I'm glad that you raised it. The legislature recently passed, Senator Hill's bill SB 793, 743, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, that would enact what the city of Sacramento did with the flavor ban. And just today, right after it was signed, the industry filed a repeal initiative. And given our strong policy against flavored tobacco and vaping, I think that the city should take a position as soon as possible to oppose that initiative and show our support for public health.
Is that in our platform, Steve? Is that in our legislative platform?
I'm guessing it is, but I just wanted to raise it specifically because we had such a big discussion at the council about that ordinance that we passed in April of last year. And our actions helped pass the state bill, although it was still a very vicious fight to get that bill through, and the governor signed it immediately. So I think that this is going to be another one of those fights that will try to pit people against each other, and it's important that hopefully we stand strong behind it.
And it is part of our platform.
Yeah, Mayor, can I just add on that subject that I'm actually quite proud of the work that we did on that ordinance? Because we could have sat by and let somebody lead, but we jumped out in front of it. And it was, it was a difficult fight, and it was a hard ordinance to pass. And I think that it has had an effect on, on the state. So maybe we, we deserve a few kudos for that one.
Good, good. I just want to end if I might by reflecting on the last couple of days, certainly over the weekend in Sacramento, and express some thank yous. I'd like to express a thank you to the peaceful protesters who came on out to express themselves with passion. And we, as we know, there was a, a division, if you will, there were some who came out and, and let their feelings be known in a, in a passionate but appropriate way. And then there were some who did not. And on that score, I want to thank the men and women who, on the front lines of the PD here, who have a very difficult job in that circumstance amidst a lot of, amidst a lot of politics in our country and in our community. And the men and women, I thought, were both strong in presence, but also smart by really focusing on de-escalation. And that is, and the outcome, though not perfect, because any damage to property or any injury to anyone is not acceptable. But in perspective, especially compared to other cities throughout the country, we stood up very, very well. And so I just wanted to acknowledge those who who were on the front lines, both the peaceful protesters, but also the men and women of the, of the police department who also helped keep the peace. Is there anything else to come before the city council tonight? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good night, everyone.